Okay.
All right, so this begins the regular meeting of the Elderly and Disabled Tax Fund Committee. Today is Thursday, June 6th, 2024. We are broadcasting to Zoom for the third panel act on the Town of Dyck homepage. This meeting is being recorded and it's soon hybrid accessible. The meeting is taking place at prime time, Council on Aging, which is 10:59, Summer Set Ave, Dyck. And the meeting ID is 847-9953-5136, passcode 088581. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did I just?
Yeah, I think somebody said.
I'm just gonna make sure.
Oh, hello. Oh, this is gonna be a little danger zone. It is, Bill.
Hey.
I'm gonna move this so you can not trip.
Welcome, welcome. Good to see you.
Okay. Just gonna slide.
All right, so just to preface, with the closeout of the fiscal year happening and some transitions going on with the leadership team at Town Hall.
Yes.
I've been fairly swamped, to be honest. I have not had much time to get, make as much headway as I would have liked.
Sure, okay.
But to proceed through our agenda, did everybody get a chance to look at the meeting minutes for our last meeting?
Yes.
I do apologize for setting them a little late.
No, all good.
So if we do need to push them to the next meeting, I understand.
Goes up.
I read them.
Yeah, they looked good to me. Good enough, yeah. All right, so I'll now entertain a motion to approve the May 9th, 2024 meeting minutes.
I make that motion?
Motion eight seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. So now to move to the old business, to review, discuss, and act eligibility guidelines, application window, minimum, maximum, award amounts. John, so Jonathan sent out some edits that he provided that were based on the template from the Westboro application that we reviewed last time.
Oh, he did the application?
He did an example application, so what?
I also did, because I.
Oh, perfect.
Looking at the meeting minutes.
We need all that we can get.
I saw that he was doing guidelines, is what he was going to do, so I did the application.
Perfect.
But I could also.
But we can.
No, so really, what I'm thinking in terms of these agenda items are gonna kind of blend together a little bit, just because they're closely related. So for tonight's meeting, just to kind of identify our timeline and roadmap for what we would like to have done today and what we have some time to do, is that if the committee decides that we want the application window to mirror the exemption application window, which I think makes the most sense, that gives us a lot of time, because, Bill, the application window for exemptions, is that January through April 1st? Is that what that is?
Yeah.
They begin.
It's any time through April.
Oh, through April 1st?
I don't think there's any, like.
Like start. I guess it would be the first year.
Gotcha, so I would say that maybe if we made our start point, I think it makes the most sense to be like January 2nd or Janu- we put January 1st, but realistically, January 2nd through May, through April 1st.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that that would kind of give us a window where, once the committee's established, we have our applications, we have our guidelines, there really won't be a lot of reason for us to meet every month.
Right, right.
You know, we meet several times in kind of rapid-fire fashion in an isolated part of the year.
Yep.
Can I toss out just a random?
Please.
I'm not, I'm not sure I even support it, but I'm just thinking about, you know, setting the timeframe. The Board of Assessor timeframes tend to be very, very rigid. Would we want to consider going later than the Board of Assessor's time period to maybe catch somebody who was like, oh, God, I didn't get it filed on time?
My feeling is no, for the reason being that we're running out of quarters to apply the award to. If we were to go past May, we would really only be applying it to delinquencies at that point. Because the next tax payment would be the one due in August, which hasn't been committed to me yet, so I. So I think that that would make the most sense if we were to just apply it as a credit to the fourth quarter payment. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, I thought we were gonna just literally give money towards the account. I thought that's what we decided last time. I mean, internally, it's just gonna be, you know, moving from one ledger to another.
Right, right, that's what I.
But it's going through your office, not the Board of Assessor's office.
Right, exactly, exactly. It'll, it'll get processed directly as a credit to their tax bill, that way we're not.
Right, so, so the tax bills, you got, what, January, and then April, and then?
Yep, so they're due in February 1st and May 1st, are those the third and fourth quarters?
So you're suggesting that we need to have our selections done by May 1st?
Right, exactly, exactly, so if we were to.
Okay, like I said, I wasn't sure I was in support of it, I'm just.
Talking and throwing it out there.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're starting something brand new here, so.
Exactly. Do Laura Tristan, either of you have thoughts on the timeline? Agree, disagree, different ideas?
I agree.
I agree too. You guys are a lot more hands-on with the timelines, so I think that makes the most sense, because if it would be late, then I feel like that kind of is counteractive.
Yeah.
And that way, we know too what you guys award, so, so I guess my question would be, with the assessors, they're due April 1st for any tax relief for, in this example, seniors or, I guess, disabled too, for the blindness one.
And we have time to act. Again, we have time to act on that. I'm thinking, certainly it's at least 30 days. Well, Stephanie would know the answer of when our deadline is. Usually she's, I think.
Of like approval or denial?
Yeah.
Okay.
So once we get it, you know, our deadline for receiving it is April 1st, that I'm certain of. But then usually we're having a meeting, and like, she's like, oh, we've gotta act on these, or sometimes you're even a little late.
Yeah.
On acting on.
Gotcha, so sometimes maybe assessors makes a decision past May 1st?
That may, that may happen.
So that could mess us up too, because if they make a motion or approval to say, one of them was, well, they might change, but I'm not sure. I think it was a thousand dollars for one of the senior ones, if I'm remembering off the top of my head, or seven fifty?
Our exemptions are a thousand.
Thousand, so say we do one for 300, and they have an approval for a thousand, now they're getting both. What if that exceeds what their last payment or last bill would look like?
So by our definition of what we talked about last time, we're not going to be giving amounts to people that receive.
Right, that's the goal. That was what we want to do, but if we're making our decision prior to May 1st, but you guys make your decision after May 1st.
We could approve it, and then all of a sudden the Board of Assessors.
Right, so I think we need to make sure our approvals are after the assessors do, because then they can double dip. And that's the whole, a big conversation we had last time, that would be preferably a no-no, because we want to help the people who aren't qualified for the assessors, so I guess it's not really when we need the deadline by, it's more so when we would make our meeting date and.
So I think what Paul was saying is that the deadline is for application, you know?
Correct.
We don't necessarily need to.
Make a vote.
Deny.
Sell.
Right, right.
The deadline, the deadline.
Deadline can still mirror.
Yep.
And.
We just need to be careful about meeting dates when it comes closer.
Right, and we haven't, I don't think we've settled on a, on an exact verbiage for the application yet. I think that's still in discussion.
Yep.
But I know it sounded like from our discussion last time, one of the items that we're gonna include pretty high up is, have you currently applied for an exemption?
Yes, and I did include that on a draft.
So maybe at that point, when we go to make decisions, if we have applications for people who have applied for an exemption, but it's not yet decided, that might be something that we can kind of deal with on a case-by-case basis as we go.
Correct.
So my impression was that that question was an exclusionary question. Like, if you don't, if you haven't applied for an exemption through the Board of Assessors, then have a nice day, go talk to the Board of Assessors.
Yeah, and that would be fine too, if that's, if that's the form that it ultimately takes, that we're gonna require people to apply for an exemption with the expectation that, you know, most of them will be denied.
And the reason, the reasoning I'm saying, because I spoke about this yesterday at our Board of Assessors meeting, talked about everything we talked about at our last meeting, and they're on board with the idea of, you know, Stephanie's a little, yeah, okay. Pretty much, we're in agreement that all of these people are gonna go to the Board of Assessors first, go through the Board of Assessors process, sign a waiver of some sort that we do have to come up with.
Right.
To be able to transfer information from the Board of Assessors' research to us. So all of the applications will be coming through the Board of Assessors.
Correct.
Right.
But they would have to also fill out this application in addition to whatever application you guys have, so they would get both.
Right, exactly. We could possibly get some legal language to build that indemnity or that authorization to share information. We could probably build that into our application, so that they're signing that as part of it, that we have the right or to, you know, their consent.
Yeah, on the very end of.
Documentation documents.
All of the applications I saw, there were signatures for all of it, so it could be a line, kind of like ours on our, on our Council on Aging volunteer application, we have kind of an italicized print above it stating how you understand that we are going to run a query based on the information provided on our query paperwork. So that way they can't, essentially giving us permission to do that on top of this all. So we could add that on, like, right above the signature lines. So they're signing for all of this information to be accurate, as well as allowing us to access the documentations provided to the assessors.
Okay, but when looking at something like that, I don't think it's wise or fair or whatever. This sheet that you've got there has already been filled out for the Board of Assessors.
This is what we were asking you last time, was what do you guys have? What documents do you ask, what paperwork is asked for, so that it's not repetitive?
Right, okay, so just wanna make sure it's.
We need to see that information on what's already asked for, because then it's pointless for them to do it twice.
Right, so if, if they're asking, that actually could really streamline the application, right? As if we have your, have you applied for a exemption currently? If the answer is no, then you are required to provide.
That was one of the first.
Exemption.
This was the copy of Seekonk or Harvard's, and it sounds like Jonathan pretty much used Westbarr's, which is, a lot of it was the same information, but that's the first question here. Have you applied for any real estate tax exemption for the current fiscal year, yes or no? Did you receive tax relief from the committee last year? That was one point that we made pretty strong last time too, yes or no? And then one of the places said, I am able to pay X amount of dollars towards my tax bill, just giving a rough idea of like, hey, I can, I have this kind of money, but then obviously all of this information would help us figure it out too. There was a document, documentation checklist that one of them had, which we work with a few programs in Taunton on the Council on Aging side for different types of home repair and other resources that they could use, and two of the ones that are very easy to figure out and read has this, and it's the first thing you look at to know. What do I need to gather to fill all this out? So you kind of already have it, and then it's just a matter of, oh, there's that paper here, I write it in. But if this is something, I almost wonder if, and to be honest, it sounds like it would be similar anyway, because it's tax relief and regardless, it's going to be very similar. Do we just piggyback onto their application and literally just put a line?
I think that would make sense, that way if we just have, you know, we just have a few questions on our questionnaire. Are you a veteran? Are you age 65? Have you applied for an exemption? I hereby authorize the committee to request copies of any of my confidential documents from the Board of Assessors.
I just wonder why don't other towns do that? Like, why?
Because we're pioneers.
I hope, I just wonder why others wouldn't do that already, because all the other ones did say it starts at the assessors. So why wouldn't they just already do that?
Piggyback, yeah.
I wonder if we could reach out to a few towns and see why they have their own separate application.
It's a good idea.
I just wonder why, because it's all gonna be this, this.
Hold my opinion on that. But I do, I like the, and that's what I've been trying to push all along, is to have us piggyback the whole process on the Board of Assessors.
Which we agree from the get-go, yeah.
Because the senior exemption, for example, is, it's exactly what we're trying to do here.
Yep.
And that's the process, yeah, so we're just trying to catch people that don't meet the Massachusetts DOR official guidelines.
You'll already have tax returns, bank statements, or whatever the.
Everything, all the stuff that's gonna be needed by this. So the only thing that should be on a questionnaire is the sort of things that you just said, things that are different from the Board of Assessors.
Right, so like our own local flavor, like, are you a veteran? If we wanna give preference there, are you at least 60 years old?
The other things that I'm sure, well, maybe you do ask for this, I don't know, I guess maybe next meeting, if it would be helpful, if you're able to bring or send us, is he able to send us in an email, or is that open meeting?
As far as I understand it, you can distribute meeting materials to the members of the committee, as long as no discussion, deliberation, or the decision-making takes place.
If we can see what that form is, that the application one, and then what is the supporting documents needed for it? Like, for the disabled one, we discussed, and Jonathan had a lot of good points about, he had a formal, form that most physicians use that he was gonna bring to the meeting. I don't know if he sent that, I didn't get a chance to read through his email.
That wasn't included in the email, but yes, exactly.
So like seeing something like that, I don't know if you require that for any of the disabled exemptions?
Um, yes, we do require.
Like some sort of citation from a physician or somewhere? And then.
Because believe it or not, people do try to pull.
Oh, I'm sure, I'm sure.
Sure.
I'm amazed, if you ever join in, if you ever at one of the executive sessions where we go over the.
We'll never be at the executives, we will never be at those.
If you were, you'd see that it's either like here or there. It's either like, yeah, we're totally, this is totally right, or it's like, what is this person trying to pull?
Okay. So, yeah, I guess it would just be scrap-making our own and just add a line on theirs?
Yeah, so I think we'll have plenty of time to draw from the ideas to come up with that, so if we want to work that for our next meeting.
Yeah, definitely.
And so tonight, I think, just to kind of draw a line to divide stuff that I think are action items that will be decided tonight, or that would be good to decide tonight, and then things that we kind of have a couple of months to work, to work out. The things that I'd like to see tonight would be, the first would be if we kind of formally decide that we want to have our window run from, I'm just gonna make it up, say, January 1st to April 1st.
Yep.
Just making, making that up. So you want a motion?
Yeah.
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we set our application window to be January 1st through April 1st.
I second that.
All right, made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, and then the second thing that I would like to see tonight would be if the committee were to consider a motion to request, because I'll be attending the next Board of Selectmen meeting anyway, for a couple of things, I'm on there a couple of times.
Okay.
If the committee would like to recommend, I would be happy to appear at that meeting to request that the Board of Selectmen authorize me in my capacity as collector to modify the tax donation form.
Yep.
In order to include the application window.
Yes.
And one of the things I would really like would be, we don't have time right now, but for the actual billing that goes out, so we have preliminaries and actuals, just to, I'm not a tax jargon at you. The preliminary bills are the ones that'll be going out this month, so I send the preliminary bills in June, and that will have the bills, the bills for the August and November.
Okay.
Payments on there, and then when we say the actuals, that's the third and fourth quarters, which go out on the bills that go out, that's like how the Grinch stole Christmas tax bill.
Oh, yeah.
Week of Christmas is when I send those.
Wonderful timing.
Terrible.
And so those are the actuals, so the actuals, by the time we reach the actuals, I would love if we are able, in the meantime, and this will maybe be action items for our next couple agendas, will be to, with the same arm, would be to get a town webpage, right?
Yep.
So we can discuss the committee, and, you know, maybe we can modify, I'll, I'll bring the contribution form to the next meeting. I'll bring it so that we can look at it, and I'll do it after my edit. So I basically keep the existing form as it is now.
Just adding in the window.
We see the assessing office for applications available between January 1st and April 1st. And that will give us a couple of months to really kind of.
Narrow it all down.
Exactly, and get those to be materialized. Then by the time we do the actuals, we can do all this again, where I'll request permission from the board to modify it, to maybe include the town webpage if people want to learn more.
Yeah.
And then, you know, if we come up with any other additional info that we want to put on there, if we want to change the format, I'm totally open to playing with it. I inherited the form as it exists, so we can change it to whatever extent the selectmen allow.
You're gonna be mailing one this month with the, that we can add in the application window? You're saying the second mailer would be the December one, right?
Yep, and that one, I think, is the really important one, because that's gonna be the one that kind of dovetails with the application window.
So this first one can really just help us add some more, hopefully, donations too?
Exactly, exactly.
Awesome.
And so those are the two things that were kind of the action items for tonight.
So do you need a motion for that?
Yeah, yeah.
To discuss with the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah, please, so if I could entertain a motion to request that the Board of Selectmen allow us to modify the tax insert for the voluntary tax contributions to reflect an application window available with the assessing office between January 1st and April 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I was like, if anyone's repeating that, oh my, good luck.
I drank a lot of coffee.
It was perfect though.
Sounds like an auctioneer.
You're great, Paul.
Hey, thank you. So really, for the remainder of the meeting, I don't have anything specific, so if we, one, we could just kind of have a brief discussion around what we have on the application so far, how we feel that things are going, if there's any opportunities that we want to identify to promote this in town. Once we're up and running, I think maybe we could work with the Cable Committee.
Absolutely.
If you know anybody on there.
You know, I think we know somebody.
There's a contact we know of.
You know, that's something as well that we could do, you know, I'd be happy to do a, you know, we could do a little interview style, sit down to talk about it.
Yeah.
And.
That'd be great.
I think that that would be.
You could do a business spotlight with yourself.
There we go.
Okay.
I'm here with Paul Reynolds. That'd be beautiful.
They must be separate seats, though.
Oh, absolutely, we have to change seats, absolutely.
I'll bring two shirts, we can do it.
Two of our cameras are like identical, but it's just slightly to the right, so I can just switch cameras, so.
There we go.
That gives you that little change.
Perfect.
You could do like Tommy Two-Face?
Oh, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, I like that.
And you know, that would bring a lot of attention, because it's humor mixed with educational. That might be the one, think about that one, but you got some time to think about it.
Sounds good.
The only thing I wanted, well, I think honestly, there's, I don't know if we should even review some of these drafts, because if we're gonna piggyback, I think having the assessors for next meeting, that would be when the discussion would be best.
And then we can go through.
That's true.
Because I feel like we're almost like wasting our time, like discussing all the pieces here that are already on it.
Yeah, so would you like to just send us the application checklist that you have?
I can request Stephanie to get, get me a copy of that.
Perfect.
Awesome, so to bring the application or supporting documents requested would be?
Actually, I can probably just ask her to walk it over to you. Instead of the hall.
So far, that's a lot to add, that's way too much to add.
I'm a millennial, I read the G P S.
You just have to walk over the parking.
Or you could actually walk over.
That's true, that's true, so I will do that.
Okay.
I will request from the.
Stephanie.
From, so can you do that?
Yeah. Okay.
I got that, only because it's of convenience.
Of course, absolutely.
I, I think last time we already kind of discussed different, or as last time or the first meeting, we discussed ways to promote Strawberry Vine. It's mailed to 1,500 or so houses, it's literally everybody 60 and older. We discussed last time that we like the age of 60 anyway, so boom, that's gonna hit every household with somebody that's 60.
You said that you would get like a plaque or something to put outside of your.
Windows, yes.
Service counter.
Yep.
Your service counter and assessors.
Do you think we could make a couple, like, do you think that would be worth it for us? And then we could just have it here or whatever on our.
And also one who has a bulk of cardstock too.
Fantastic, yeah, we'll make some like smaller little things about it too, and that way we can have them here for folks to grab. We have our resource wall, so that way they can grab some more stuff.
And then we could do, you know, once we get a town webpage, and, you know, we can talk, we're doing something with Cable.
Yep, Cable, the town website, the town Facebook page, the COA Facebook page.
Right, yeah, we've got a lot of trumpets that we can pull on this.
I think that'll really hit, obviously not everyone's on Facebook, but there's a good age, I'd say, well, we've learned as an average, between 60 and 75 are pretty Facebook savvy, and then the older folks, you like to look at the Strawberry Vine paper. And then there's some people that would want to do website, a lot of the older folks who like the paper also watch Channel 9, so I think hitting all those spots really captures the audience that we're targeting this towards, so.
So how do we do the webpage? I know you usually handle that piece for Council on Aging, do we talk to Leanne to start that, or?
Probably, because she has the access for the whole website.
Yes, I think she's.
When we all first started, we all did, and then it got narrowed, I think, to our own specific spots, so that would definitely be a Leanne. Question, and then if it is access granted, she'd probably grant both of us access, if you do, I don't know if you do the assessors page or not, but.
If I may suggest.
I mean, sorry, Trevor.
If I may suggest, we do have an assessor page that has all of the available exemptions.
Yes.
If you, I would suggest that you somehow piggyback or link to that page, so it would be the exemptions and then a link to.
Yes, it would probably stem from the assessors page anyway, do you know, is it, do you edit that page, or is that, I don't know.
Nobody in assessors.
Leanne does it for me, for, for us.
Oh, okay, I forget there was somebody in assessors who did the training, but I don't think she's there anymore. So I guess it would be Leanne to do those two pages, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can reach out to her, get that going. Before the next, we want to do this before the next meeting?
No, we would probably need the application here.
So I would say that this, if we could have this up by like, prior to Thanksgiving, that would be.
November would be a nice timeline, for sure.
Exactly, then we'd be well, because hopefully, I'm thinking, if we can meet sometimes in July, August, and September, that gives us three meetings to really come up with the definitive application. We could take July off.
I'm kidding, I'm joking, I literally just walked from there to in here, so it's fine.
That's a hell of a commute across the parking lot.
Yeah, it's a big commute, it's rough.
Some of us have to drive in.
Oh, tough.
That's true.
Well, we've got, we've got the Zooms, we got Zooms.
Have to take a gas to get down your driveway. So does anybody have, have anything else for this evening?
Do we want to schedule the next meeting, or no?
Yes, I would say it would probably be a good idea to schedule our next meeting.
I do need to go grab my calendar, I apologize.
Before we go there, so one of the things I don't see on here, and it was a question that was asked of me, is have we, what is the amount? What is the award amount? I had stuck in my head $300.
I think that would be.
100 to 300 dollar award.
Yep.
Yep, so is that what we're sticking with, is?
There was no motions made, it was discussion.
At this time, that sounds good to me, because we do have small dollars right now, and hopefully that's something we'll be able to, have the capacity to revise over time.
Agreed.
But right now, I do, I think.
I was thinking something, just let me run this by you, what if, you know, so we have a certain amount of money that we, I don't know if we're, we're gonna try to empty the account every time or not, but we're gonna have a certain number of applicants. Wouldn't it kind of sort of make sense, rather than having like, oh, we're gonna approve these people, and then, oh, we ran out of money, saying, you know, we would give it to all the people we thought were worthy, but whatever percentage, am I making sense?
I know exactly, I was kind of thinking that originally too, when I listened to.
This is how much we're gonna give out this year.
Right.
And now divided by the number of people that we approve.
Or say we want to save, I don't know, right now we have like three, just over three. So say we want to make sure we roll over at least 1,000 or 500, whatever, if we want to roll any money over in case we don't get a lot of donations the next time, basing it per year on, this is how many applicants, this is what we have, subtracting what we want to roll over, and divide it that way to divvy it up.
Right.
We could do some math, I mean, I think you had said, and I think it's a great idea, to say, how much do you need?
Right, how much can I pay versus this?
So maybe a person only needs 100 bucks, I don't know.
Right.
Yeah.
But, but one person needs 100 bucks, another person needs 1,000.
Yeah.
So I would say, oh, that person got their 100, they're done, and then we give as much of the person's 1,000 as we could.
Okay.
You know, that's sort of.
And it would really change per year, because.
Of course it would.
Listening back here in the 100 to 300 is nice, but say one year we get, this is wishful thinking. We get somebody hits the lottery and they're like, oh my God, I'm gonna donate $50,000 to this beautiful thing to help seniors. And we're like, yeah, we're only gonna do 100 to 300, because that's what's in our policy.
Yeah, sure, sure, so we don't want to nail ourselves to one.
We don't even necessarily have to set a maximum award now.
True.
That's something that we could consider, say, at the beginning of our application review period sometime in April.
Okay.
Because we'll know what we'd have for funds too.
Right, what I'm thinking is the first year is gonna be funky, because we have surplus that's been built up. I'm thinking that in the. I'm thinking that in the future, it might be a good idea if we consider limiting the total donations to the amount of donations received in the previous fiscal year. So like just as an example, for fiscal twenty, if we were doing it this, if we'd done it this year, just as an example, we didn't. But if we'd done it, if we'd done it this year, we were distributing them, you know, last month. If we limited it to the amount of money that we are willing to disperse is however much we have minus what was contributed this fiscal year. So basically up until the end of fiscal twenty three donations. And then, so that we're always. I misstated it, but basically we could distribute up to what we received in the previous year. That way we're not giving away this year's money.
Gotcha. I see. Like, so we're getting money for, by fiscal year, you mean, or calendar year? This would go by fiscal year because you put the mail run.
Yeah, exactly. So if we're doing by fiscal year, so in fiscal twenty four, we would have been able to give away receipts that we had taken, pretending it was a zero count. Let's pretend we gave it all away. In fiscal twenty four, we'd be able to give away the amount of donations we received in fiscal twenty three. We wouldn't be dipping into the donations that we received this fiscal year too.
I like that.
Because then we're kind of always, we're like robbing tomorrow a little bit.
Right, I agree. Okay, like that. Because we'll get a expenditure ledger from Serena. Like departments typically do like what we get monthly, actually. She does do that monthly. So we'll know, say by, well, definitely this year, we're going to know, we should know what we have by the end of June.
And I reckon that bank account monthly, so I could tell you.
Perfect. Oh, we happen to have somebody on the inside that can really help us. I agree with that. I think that's really important. And then, like you said, this year is going to definitely be wonky because we already have some money.
Right, right.
I agree with all of this. How, how do we going to memorialize every committee, organization, whatever? We have these meetings and people all go around and make motions to say, oh, this is what we're going to do. And then it just, it gets written on minutes and then it just sort of fades away and maybe somebody might remember it. Are we going to memorialize this somehow in some sort of guidebook, handbook, something like that?
Like policies?
I think that's a great idea, exactly.
Maybe we could reflect the cumulative decisions that have been made by this committee over the, over a period of time.
I think that would be listed in the guidelines that we're going to create.
Sometimes, sometimes.
Won't necessarily.
Our, our math for figuring out how we're going to give it out, that's probably not something we want to.
Well, maybe it would be so people would understand potentially what they could get. So it's not a specific, I feel like that is going to be a big question. Well, if I fill this out, what am I going to get? Well, we don't really know because it's based on, that could be something that's written in guidelines. That awards would be dispersed or awarded based on what is collected within that fiscal year, divided by the applicant count. We could do something like that. So that way people have a rough idea. I mean, it doesn't, they won't know what we have in our account. But at least they know, all right, there's a calculation figured out. It's not like you get a hundred, you get three hundred, you get two hundred. It's a fair way to do it. So people don't feel like, oh, so and so got this and I only got this. Could be something we put in there. The options are endless right now. We are creating this.
I was just thinking of another potential problem is like, like what hap, what would happen if like tomorrow, we got a single applicant? And that was it. Like, we're going to give them three thousand dollars? You could have the opposite problem.
That is so very true.
Well, we could either put a cap on it or we could say that, we could just reserve internally reserve the right to.
Yeah, I don't like the idea of a cap because I think that there might be, I feel like there might be that situation that would arise at some point. Said, yeah, this person needs thousands of dollars.
Right, well, we could say that the total awards that will be distributed.
Don't exceed their bill.
Will, are not to exceed the bill, are not to exceed the receipts that we took in for the previous year donations.
Yep.
And, and will otherwise be distributed based on, on a needs basis, based on what the committee determines.
Have, I don't know if I, I don't think I added it on my rough draft because it was something I realized would go more on the guidelines than the application. We had said, oh, it's in the minutes. Sorry, I'm stealing this from you. This was the first one I saw. I quoted what you had, the committee shall have the discretion to waive the aforementioned criteria due to unforeseen circumstances. So that alone could help us just say, even though we said it's going to divide from the number of applicants and amount, that sentence right there gives us kind of free will.
Right, right. Because, you know, if you.
Because there is always going to be.
Right.
You never know.
You could have a plumber whose tax returns said that they made plenty of money, but three weeks ago they fell off a ladder or broke both their legs.
Yep, absolutely.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
So that sentence is kind of a sable. It's like in every job description that we were doing it. It's that blanket thing that says, and your job duties may vary based on. What the, like whatever it was, it's just a blanket statement that just covers, anything can happen.
I do like the idea of saying, at least making it clear that there's a cap at your tax bill.
Absolutely.
Right, absolutely.
I think that probably if I'm, if I'm like ruminating it in my head, I think that's probably would be fair, you know. So I, I think if, if there was a situation where we had one person apply and say we had two thousand dollars in income from, from the previous year, and that's the only person that applied, I don't think I necessarily would be against saying, okay, give that person the two thousand dollars. Because that's what it's for.
And that money was collected.
And the money was collected that year. So next year, you know, we'll do it all over again, see, you know, what we get the next year. But I wouldn't want to be giving, like if we collected fifty thousand dollars like in your lottery condition.
Lottery.
I don't want to say, oh, we got one applicant, here's your check.
Buy a new car.
Yeah, definitely cap of the bill.
So capital bill, I think, is, gives us lots of flexibility.
Yeah, I agree.
I hope someone hits the lottery.
Right.
So, so should I, should we put that in the form of a motion that we will only refund up to the total tax bill?
If you'd like to do that now, I'm totally amenable to that. If you want to.
Or should we wait till we review the app, all the things?
Okay, yeah, if we review everything and then once we maybe ultimately craft a policy that will ask the board of selectmen to memorialize, to adopt as a town policy for the, you know, the taxation aid relief policy or some, something of that nature.
That'd be wonderful.
So I was under the impression that this, this fund is completely outside of the board of selectmen purview.
The fund is, was voted on at town meeting ten years back. But policies being created for any committee does go through board of selectmen for approval.
At the very least, it gains us a lot bigger spotlight, right? At least it popularizes it.
Board of selectmen announcements, another way to advertise.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Boom.
Yep.
Does anybody actually watch those?
You'd be surprised, those YouTube accounts. I don't know if, does that, do people get, oh, yeah.
You can see that.
Yeah. I didn't know if it was just from the background studio.
Twenty or thirty or something like that.
Some of them spike.
I watch them when I'm in my office. I do data entry. I just stream it on the screen.
Do you?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
It's a way to kind of like, kind of know what's going on.
Yeah.
You have issues, man. How much time do you have?
Do we want this in public meeting or do you want us to adjourn first? Oh, wait, I was going to go get my calendar because we're going to do the meeting, right?
Oh, yes.
Next one? So Paul, is that second, do you, second Thursday of the month still?
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
That would be Thursday, July eleventh, if you guys are available.
I actually have nothing on that day. Oh, my God.
Thursday, that is.
Oh, yeah, because that first Thursday would have been Fourth of July.
Yeah, no, that, that.
Do you guys want to be on Fourth of July?
What about you, Bill? Is that, is the eleventh all right?
It should be, yeah.
Okay. And Laura, you have nothing?
I have nothing. And then we can send this to Jonathan.
And four o'clock, still good?
Sounds great. Is, is four o'clock work for you guys? I can do three thirty if that.
Oh, no, it's because honestly it gives us that hour after work where there's no one here. We can get more stuff done. So I kind of like it. Although today we just jibber jabbered with Bella.
All right, so.
Okay, that's wonderful.
I.
Add it in. It's official.
I would like to obtain a motion to schedule our next meeting for four P M. at prime time on July eleventh. So moved.
Seconded up.
Motion made, seconded. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any public input? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at four forty one.
Mid and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is four forty one P M. This concludes the multi-meeting.
Oh, gosh, I'm so sorry. This thing is not working. The moment is going to end. Stop recording.
Just call the power phone.